We're going to get started with the December 2nd meeting. It's December 1st, it's December 2nd meeting, a regular meeting of the zoning commission. And our first order of business is checking on attendance. And I see the whole team is here, we have nine numbers present and ready to go, so we don't need to appoint alternates. So, the next item is the introduction of the major business of tonight, so.
You want the minutes first?
Oh, excuse me, I'm looking right at them and I guess my eyes went down first, but the minutes. The minutes of the meeting on December 14th.
So you've got two, you've got the special meeting from November 14th and the regular meeting from November 15th.
So we're going to do them separately, we're going to start with the minutes of December, uh, November 14th. I hope everybody's had a chance to read them, do you have any comments or corrections or additions to make? No comments, corrections, or additions? Well, I just have one, my name isn't, no, that's coming up. So my name is fine on this one, so any other points? Then we're ready to, motion to approve this submitted, anybody?
I will move that we approve the minutes from the November 14th, 2024 special meeting as submitted.
Okay, in a second, please?
Second.
Ready for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't present at the meeting and I do feel like I was filled in, but I'm going to abstain anyway.
So we'll make a note that you weren't present at the meeting and abstain from the vote. So the vote is five to zero, so it's still, it's unanimous approval as you submitted. Now for the minutes of the meeting on November 15th, regular meeting. Same question, I have not exactly a question, but if everybody's had an opportunity to read them. Any questions, comments, suggestions? This is the one that, my name isn't correctly presented on the minutes. The spelling of my last name is incorrect.
Two L's, two Ts?
Yes. Smith isn't part of my name.
What lines out?
That's just on.
No, so, no comments, corrections, or additions? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye, please, make a motion. Oh yeah, excuse me.
I'm a two o'clock.
Thank you, we got a motion, that's in a second, so all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Then that's the unanimous approval too, so, with the one correction. So that's it for the minutes, now moving on to the main reason for tonight is that we need to deal with an application related to housing, the Housing Strategies Toolkit. And my friend Tony's going to be.
Speak louder, please.
I'll give it a try, sure.
Thank you.
We have a recording system here, and so there's a record of what we all say that comes out quite clearly. I hear you, so, Tony, if you would read that.
Public hearing is ZC 24-06, Housing Strategies Toolkit. A text amendment application of the Simsbury Zoning Commission to amend certain sections in town zoning regulations to provide for the introduction of new housing strategies assigned to facilitate more diverse housing opportunities in town specifically. Accessory dwelling units to amend section 3.5, accessory dwelling units to revise to review an approval process for attached and detached accessory dwelling units. R8 zone, 8,000 square foot lots to amend section 2 zoning districts and section 3 residential districts to add a new residential zoning district with minimum 8,000 square foot lots, 4,000 square foot lots for two-family homes and corresponding development standards setbacks and requirements. Workforce housing overlay zone to amend and rename section 8.3 to housing strategies floating zone to create additional housing opportunities with flexible design standards and inclusionary zoning to amend the zoning regulations by creating a new section 8.7, inclusionary zoning requirements to require all residential projects, 10 or more homes to set aside 15% of their units as affordable, with half of those units to be sold or rented to households with incomes at or below 80% of median household income. And have to be sold or rented households.
That's the other half.
And half.
And half would be, yeah.
Two, the word two is missing.
Yeah, and half to be sold or rented to households with incomes at or below 60% of median, median household income as defined in CGS 8-3, 8-IG and RCSA 8-309-7. This requirement would apply to all residential development of 10 units or more townwide, including projects subject to the Simsbury Center Code where a new section 7.9 will be added, and the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code where a new section 7.0.E will be added.
Thank you. Before we, we move on to the actual public participation in this process, our planning director, George McGregor, is going to do a summary sort of presentation on the major elements of what we're talking about here, so that for those who aren't as familiar as they might want to be, there is more insight coming forward. George, if you'd like to take the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. It's more of a, just framing the issue and kind of how we got here from. So yeah, so, so it is a, it is a, technically a zoning regulation text amendment. And we'll call it kind of Housing Strategies Toolkit, and it includes four primary elements. And that is a new, a new introduction of an inclusionary housing requirement, which is essentially a requirement for developers to provide an affordable percentage of, of units in, in any project over, over 10 units. A, tweak to the accessory dwelling unit process, particularly related to process and how we review accessory dwelling units. The third item is an introduction of a, of a standard small lot zoning district of 8,000 square feet. And then finally is a kind of a renaming of what we have used as our workforce housing overlay zone with some changes to it as well. A couple of housekeeping items is, you know, we like to do this, we like to have applicants do it, although they don't always do it. We provided legal notice in the Hartford Current, advertising this public hearing to, to be held on, on, on two occasions. So when we get to that point, let's make sure we continue the public hearing. But the legal notice advertises a public hearing for today, 12/2, as well as a public hearing on 12/16 at your next meeting. We've provided our, our proper notice to our, our joining towns, we provided notice in filing with the town clerk. We have provided you with a, the planning commission has provided a positive referral for this draft text amendment, and then I would make the staff report memo as well as all the draft text amendment language part of the record. So, so let's just take one step back quickly, because this is really a, a culmination of an implementation process that started with the, the Plan of Conservation and Development, which as everybody knows is kind of the broader policy document for, for land, maybe everybody doesn't. You know, our broader aspirational goal document, where we talk about the kind of place Simsbury wants to be. So, so we have housing policies that, that really, that really have a history from the, from the 2010 plan and then include similar language in the 2017 plan and the newly adopted 2024 plan that was adopted last January. And I just wanted to read this to everybody, because it, it sets the, the, it sets the stage for why we're doing this, why this body is considering these changes. And, and this is the overarching policy commitment, it says the P O C D, the Plan of Conservation and Development recognizes that due to an aging population and changing housing preferences and other factors, single-family homes do not meet everyone's housing needs. The P O C D recognizes there's an interest and need for more housing options and choices, including housing that is affordable now and in the future. And so that, that kind of overarching policy tape statement finds its way to, to goals and strategies and action plans. And I, and I just selected one of the goals and strategies from the P O C D that really encapsulates what, what that aspirational goal is. And that's to provide for a range of housing choices for all people of all ages and economic circumstances. And doing so, respecting the safe and helpful and the distinctive living environment that is in Simsbury, and the kind, respecting the kind of place Simsbury is. And we're trying to do that by increasing the number of affordable housing units in Simsbury and seeking ways to, to meet the diverse housing needs. So that's what these four changes are all about, trying to provide options for additional housing opportunities. As, as staff said in, in the draft, in the memorandum, this is not going to change the fabric of housing in the Simsbury community. It is gonna, I think it's going to be helpful, it's going to be helpful on the margins, helpful for infill development and those kinds of, those kinds of places. So the P O C D lists 170 recommendations. They're not all relevant to the zoning commission, there are about 25 of them that were relevant to the zoning commission. The zoning commission, the last May, June, and July, went through its own prioritization process and discussed what recommendations or action steps that come out of the P O C D should the commission work, well, begin work on. And the commission chose by consensus the items that you see today. Once, once this process is complete, that I, I expect the zoning commission is going to go back through another prioritization process. This commission chose to, to start with some housing elements, although there are action steps related to lighting and open space and landscaping, and all those kinds of things you would think that would come out of a P O C D for the zoning commission. So, you'd have to read this, but it's just, it's an example of, of how the commission went through its work. They did a dot exercise and they selected priorities, so. I think it was a, it was, it was a, it was a good experience for the commission in terms of, of finding consensus. So, let me just walk you through very quickly the, the, the four items and a little bit more specificity. So, let's start with the accessory dwelling unit. We have allowed accessory dwelling units in our community for quite some time. Again, these are, these are, are smaller units on single-family lots. I think we allow up to, to 600 square feet or 30% of the single-family structure today. This, this draft does not propose any changes to, to, to the square footage or the size. It only proposes a change to how we review them. Part of providing opportunity and diversity in our housing product is, is, is sometimes trying to remove barriers. So in this case, the draft would remove the review barriers to allow a, an accessory dwelling unit that meets the requirements of our zoning regulations to get approval by staff administrative review and zoning permit. Today, we review, we, we review the two different types, you've got attached accessory dwelling units and detached. The attached ones come to the zoning commission and, and are reviewed at a public meeting by site plan. The detached items are subject to a special exception and a public hearing. So, this draft would take that review process away, remove that barrier, and allow staff review and approval for an application that meets all of the requirements of the zoning regulations, setbacks in height and square footage and those kinds of things. The inclusionary zoning is, really started this process by, by talking about inclusionary zoning. They refer to it in the industry as kind of a housing set-aside requirement, but the simplest way to describe it is that in any project over 10, over 10 units, a developer would be required to provide affordable units, affordable homes as part of that development. They would, they would have to, they would be required to provide a total of 15% of the homes in that development as affordable, with half of that 15% at, meeting the, the 60% of AMI standard and half at the 80, that, that's affordable to those at 80% AMI, that's area median income. You had discussed options for a, for a buyout or a fee-in lieu, or, or other kinds of carrots associated with it. We did not, that did not, that did not find its way to, to the final document, so, so there is no buyout or any of that included. The standards would be a 40-year standard, a housing affordability plan, and a deed restriction as part of, as part of that approval process. So the standard R8 zone, I think is, is fairly straightforward. It would be an introduction of a zone that would require a minimum of 8,000 square foot lots. Simsbury zoning today, the smallest lot size is, is an R15 or 15,000 square foot lot size. We've got 15, R25, R40, and, and goes up a little bit, R80, and R160. The, the great majority of lots in, in the Simsbury community are R40 or one-acre lots. This introduction would allow for, I think, what we heard through a couple of our more highly notarized public processes of late, which is, you know, can developers provide smaller lots and starter homes for entry-level for folks who are in the more entry-level condition in the town of Simsbury? And so, we think this does that, so it's a, it's a minimum R, R8, 8,000 square foot lot. And probably the biggest change it introduces as a matter of right, a buy right two-family home as part of the R8 lot. So, so an attached unit or what we call a duplex, two-family home would be permitted as part, as a, as a matter of right, just like a single-family home would be permitted in the R8 district. And, you know, I just, I just took one, one picture, that's what an attached unit looks like. Affordable, to be attractive, and there are locations in the community they can spend. I, I would make one major point, there's no mapping associated with this R8 district, so we've not mapped anybody's property for R8. A developer or property owner who would be interested in utilizing this district would have to come through this body, just like they would for any zone change application. And so it would be a public hearing, you'd hear from the neighbors, and that's kind of consistent with how, with how we do, we do business. The, the final item is a revision to what we have called our workforce housing overlay zone. You can see a yellow line there, the, above the yellow line is just a description of what that overlay zone already is and there are no, no changes, the changes are really the three bulge points at, at the bottom. But we recommend a change in, a change in name, first of all, in, in trying to provide housing options and opportunities. We think our most flexible zone, and that's what this zone is intended to be, really should be, it, it's intended for more than just folks in the workforce. It could be retirees, it could be those over 55, it could be for lots of different, so there's no reason to call it workforce anymore. It's, it's really a housing strategies floating zone. What it is, is our most flexible overlay that allows the developer to choose kind of from any type of, of, of housing mix you can conceive. So apartments or small single families, or a mix of those, or mixed in with commercial, or duplexes, or attached units, any of those, those kinds of things that we don't have any other standard zoning for. We don't have a, a zoning district that allows for townhouses or attached units. We don't have a straight zoning district, a standard zoning district, that allows for apartments. This is the only tool the community can use to provide for that flexibility. The process will stay the same, must have public water and sewer. And that process is really a two-step process, it requires a zone change application with a public hearing, as well as special exception application and a site plan, so, and site plan. So it's all of those, and if they do it separately, it could be two, two different public hearings. One to do the zone change, one to do the special exception. So, three, three, three changes that we are recommending to this zone. We recommend removing a multi-page section, a design section that, maybe I should go back and say this one. This, this zoning district has been used once in our community. So, it being the most flexible, it, it probably should have been used more, and there's probably, there's a number of reasons it, it probably hasn't been used, we don't need to get into that tonight, but. Remove the design section, we don't, we don't require design for our subdivisions, we don't require, we have, we have townwide design regulations. We have a requirement for those, for design review to review, so no reason we shouldn't just rely on that process. Two, we would recommend removing the restriction, there is a restriction in the current language that says that the project that utilizes this flexible zone has to be within 750 feet of Hot Meadow Street. There, there are perhaps other locations, we're trying to have a flexible, a flexible tool to use. There may be other locations that are on sewer and water that this is appropriate, so we'd recommend removing that. And finally, we, we would certainly recommend, we think it would be duplicative to remove, there's a 20% affordable housing requirement in this flexible overlay, it exists today. We would remove that in lieu of adopting whatever this body considers adopting for the townwide regulation for, for an inclusionary zoning requirement. All right, just threw in the, the page that exists today from, from your zoning regulations. Again, it just shows you that these are all the categories that are permitted under this flexible zone. Again, this is a tool that exists today, it is not the introduction of a new tool, this is, this exists today. We're just trying to make it a little bit better and hope that there are, there are folks who can take advantage of it and again, provide those affordable options. I'm happy to answer any questions, I certainly got a number of folks from the public here, I would suggest hearing from them. But, but I think they have questions if you want.
I have one question.
You, you can ask me any questions, so.
It's the first time I've used, I'm.
Well, you're going to get a chance to speak to everyone, present your questions to everyone, but it's not a, really an opportunity for debate.
I want a clarification or something.
Well, let me have, let me hear it and voila.
Okay. When we say we're dropping the, the review process for these attached or detached existing homes, does that mean that the, and the general public has no say? Does your, do your neighbors have no means of objecting to that development?
Well, there's two approval processes, one is for the detached units, and one is for the attached units. The notion here is to offer the opportunity for approval of the attached units without the public hearing being required, as it has been over the years. But, did I get that right?
Let me try, let me try, so, so, so that, so that, that, that section applies only to the accessory dwelling units, so it doesn't apply to residential, you got that, you understand that? So, yes, so today, there is a site plan requirement that, that they review and that for an attached unit, for detached unit, it is a public hearing process. This change would remove that public process as a, a straight, just like approving your house, zoning department approves your house, doesn't come here, we would do it the same way with an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to start here, Diane, with the public comments, if you.
I just had a question on the floating zone. Did you say, George, that it would remove the affordability percentage on, in the floating zone?
So, um, yes and no. So, yes, in the workforce housing, it would remove the affordability requirement. With the assumption that this body is going to consider an affordability requirement that applies to all zoning districts across the board, not just the workforce housing.
It would be subject to the other one.
Yes, the inclusion.
So it would be included, it would be included, but not specific?
Yes, exactly right, exactly, exactly.
It would be 15% instead of 20%, because that's what we're looking at right now.
It would be, I get you, I get you.
Okay. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, for, I mean, I, I know some people here, I may not have been to a zoning commission hearing before, but everybody who's here will have a chance to speak, and as was noted earlier, this meeting is, this public hearing is going to be continued to our next meeting. So anybody who couldn't make it, for whatever reason, can come in two weeks, right here on the 16th of December at 7:00. I, I want to make sure everyone understands, though, that the opportunity to speak is really what, what we're, we're looking for. We're looking for the insights of the public. And it's not going to be an opportunity to engage with the commission, it's an opportunity to present your thoughts. We're, we're interested and, and would like to hear what you're thinking on these issues. But I ask only two things, really, and one is to kind of stick with the four sort of topic areas that, that George just went over. A little string is okay, but we don't have rigid time limits. But do remember there are other people that want to speak and kind of move it along if you can, and try to be avoid redundancy of the people who've spoken earlier. So, that being said, we need to start with each person who comes to speak, to go up to the podium. There's a sound system that focuses on that area, and we need you to be recorded, and we need you to start with your name and your address, and then the floor is yours. And if you, well, I'll do it like that, and there's no sign-up sheet, so this is sort of an informal process. And maybe we'll just start with whoever's the closest and work outward, but.
Can I?
My key, I need chairs.
Sure.
We do.
Takes me a minute to get up.
We need to open it first, though.
Right, we need to open the board.
Do you need to open a public hearing?
It's, it's open, you've opened, you've read, the reading of the, um, the notice is the opening of the public hearing.
I'm just getting here.
Um, Chris Barnett, 15 Ocho Drive, I'm speaking as a resident and as a local real estate agent. I have some questions and concerns that I am asking you guys to consider when you're reviewing these, so I'm going to start by category. For the accessory dwelling units, I feel very strongly that there still needs to be public hearings about these applications. There's nothing limiting every one of my neighbors to construct an ADU in their backyard and rent it to tenants. This would have a negative impact on the character of our residential neighborhoods and the value of my property and yours. The mention on page three that the current process is a barrier should rather be viewed as a protection in place to the surrounding neighbors in order to maintain the character of their neighborhoods and any detrimental effects on their properties and their value. In addition, the guidelines by which a project is approved should not be based on, on above-grade, should be based on above-grade heated living space and should not include any square footage in a garage or below-grade walkout, non-lockout basements. Regarding the R8 zone, if an R8 zone is adopted, you've answered this, if you, if, that you haven't identified any parcels, is this something the landowner needs to apply for through the zoning commission? Are there any restrictions being proposed to prevent a property currently zoned as R40, for example, to apply for a change to an R8 and upon approval, tear down existing homes and put several in its place? Regarding the workforce housing overlay zone, I have been the, um, one and only person, one of few people who have firsthand experience trying to sell properties in this zone, in town. And there's, the things that you're not addressing in your changes are the numbers. I want to make a few comments about how this zone does not work financially. The interest rates that are used for calculations are based on CHAFA rates at the time of purchase. If the unit is purchased when rates are low and then the interest rates increase even slightly, the owner is now forced to sell the house at a lower value based on the calculations and is financially penalized. It does not allow the market to set the pricing. What department in town, in the town will be monitoring the sale and resale of these properties to make sure they are in compliance? Currently, it is invol, it's voluntary reporting. Third-party companies who administer these are extremely expensive and cost prohibitive to the developer and to the community. The utility numbers that are used in the calculations are based on numbers provided by the state, which is old data and is based on older housing options. New builds are much more energy efficient and the amount used in the calculation in many instances are too high. These units are taxed at the same rate as other. These units are taxed at the same rate as other homes in the town that, but these units have less upside to them because of the deed restrictions and are therefore less marketable upon resale. Very few lenders will loan money to a borrower for these deed restricted properties because the note is not saleable in the secondary market. That is a very important thing that you need to consider. I've lived this firsthand for years, okay? There are only some local lenders that are willing to hold these in their portfolio that will loan money to these borrowers. Inclusionary zoning, the word home needs clarification. Does this also apply to townhouses, condos and apartments or just single family homes? Is the town prepared to provide tax credits or permit reductions in order for a developer to comply with these proposed regulations in order to have the project work financially? Which is what came out of your meetings with local developers about issues related to building affordable housing units in today's market because of construction and land costs? Can a developer opt out of this and pay into a housing trust fund like Canton has allowed them to do with the town? The other question I have regarding this is you're mentioning forty year deed restrictions. Currently, our deed restricted properties are thirty. So now you wanna change them to forty year deed restrictions. This becomes even more prohibitive to those buying them. Thank you.
Please, Chris.
Something like to go next to the.
I love it when somebody stands up and talks because they know what they're talking about. So thank you. Have you been in the real estate business?
Excuse me, I just wanted to.
Twenty-five years.
Just wanted to ask you to.
Diane Nash, Five Mary Woods, Simsbury. I keep feeling like I'm butting my head against the wall. Because anybody that's been in real estate and has been in Simsbury for, I'm here fifty-seven, almost fifty-eight years. I've been in real estate for twenty-five, thirty years of that, both as a salesperson and running two major multi-state real estate companies. We had businesses, we, we bought back properties because we changed the zoning and said we gotta have more affordability. And the banks wouldn't loan the money. So Simsbury brought back the properties and allowed the developer to build. And Stratton Forest, I think it is, they actually, a group of homeowners got together and bought the property that was sitting there for affordable housing. And they own it and gave it back to Powder Forest. You have Billingsgate here, we tried something new and different. Look what's happened there. Somehow we are looking at real estate business, whether it's the commission, the agents charge or zoning. You guys are the one thing that has kept us from being an absolutely bankrupt town. Because had we expected real estate and zoning to solve our economic development. It's always because zoning doesn't let us. But we're not a diverse enough community because of our zoning. We're not affordable because of our zoning. Not about our taxes, not about our schools, not about all the things that created the reason why people are willing to spend more to live here and make it less affordable. It's because you have kept this town as good as it is. And tonight I wanted to ask you, actually, I was gonna say, close your eyes and envision some of this more inclusive and dense housing. And instead I say to you, no, open your eyes. Go home and look at your echo lot and see how many houses your ticket could be included on your echo. And tell me whether our suicide treatment plan can handle. And tell me whether the one car for accessible inclusion dwellings is enough. Right now, we got people who have four cars in a two car garage. And they're parking one of them on the street. You're saying you're gonna demand one more parking space for an inclusion dwelling? You're gonna have street parking, you're gonna have all bike trails, all bike paths. We've got, you're gonna have cars in the street. Where are you gonna put these cars? To give up, and we call this your toolkit. It's not your toolkit. You're giving up your right to review each parcel and real estate. As all of you know, you don't sell ten houses. Merrill Lynch found that out. The house that, it's the same square footage on this street, maybe even in this town, is worth more to a buyer on another street in another section of town. So when you make these rules that all this can apply, and I can build an accessory dwelling on this piece of land without my neighbors have any input on how it impacts their house, their driveway, it is giving up actually what we voted you to do. And if you wanna give that up, it's part of the zoning commission's obligation to us, elected you. Do it through our town charter revision that's coming up. But don't give up what we depend on you to do. We voted for you, you've always done it. I've said it before to you, you are our most important position in town. You don't report to the board of selectmen, you report to us. And I asked you not to give up what we elected you to do. So that comes, Christmas holidays are over. Suddenly in twenty twenty-five, you look at this town and say, this can happen next door to you. It's what you bought your property, as you understand, was open space or was R forty zone. Suddenly it can change. So if you're gonna do it, wait till charter revision, please. Don't let administration convince you that they can do what you've always done well for us.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Gilbert. I live at one twenty-six Hot Meadows Street, Unit three E, which is Telkot Acres. I wanna really thank Chris for what you said. Because, um, because you're far more knowledgeable than I. And though, I, I will speak to the surface of what you spoke about. You, you really got it and, and it, it explained it well. So I appreciate that and thanks Diane. And, and I, I appreciate the zoning board because I really appreciate what you must know and the responsibility that you hold for, for our town. About the accessory dwellings, I've sat through a lot of zoning meetings and I went to the planning meeting up in Terriffill. And, and the, um, the four points were discussed up there too. I have also lived in a detached accessory dwelling when I first got married and I lived over a garage. So I know what that's like and I know what the need, I, I can appreciate that need. But I absolutely firmly believe that a public hearing for detached accessory dwelling must be maintained. Neighbors in the community should study what is proposed and decide based on the facts and not on emotion. Not, it's not gonna happen in my neighbor, it, it's not gonna happen in my backyard so much as can this happen and still be an agreeable situation? I don't want neighbors to say, no, never, but to be able to support or voice their concerns. And they absolutely should have the opportunity to voice their concerns. The other issue with the R eight zoning and frankly, until this afternoon, I had no problem with it. And then I was thinking out of the box and some people have, would, could abuse it. And, um, I wanna make sure that the R eight zoning should be in locations consistent with the area. And so somebody who has a huge amount of property and a big house, oh, please, don't take the big house down and make a whole bunch of little hu, little houses on little pieces of property if that's not consistent with the neighborhood. I'm, I'm so nervous, I'm sorry. I'm trying now. Be it developments, the neighborhood where R eight is, the smaller dwellings, multifamily dwellings, I, I would want to see the zoning board make sure that that is still in character with that area. Concerned that larger zone property would be sold, subdivided and change property values due to unplanned mixed use. So that's, that's what I had to say. But I, um, I'm, I'm really very sure that I think the public hearing about the detached accessory should be maintained. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Chris Nelson and I'm a builder and developer in town. My office is in Simsbury Grist Mill at seventy-five West Street. I know you probably saw a prior kind of letter from me expressing some concerns. I've tried to articulate them a little bit better. And actually this, it got a little long, so I just pulled half of it out and left it. So I'll only read half. So, um, we build, our company builds both single family homes and rental apartments. Projects in town I've been involved with include Mill Commons, Mill Pond Crossing, Carson Way, Icroft, and currently what was approved is Barbara Coe and Horse Boulevard. First, I'd like to applaud your efforts as the zoning commission along with staff's efforts to consider zoning strategies that can increase the number of affordable housing options. It's great to see. We need more reasonably priced but well-done housing. I support simplifying approvals for accessory dwelling units, although I do agree review is appropriate. I support adding an R eight zone, allowing smaller lot communities and duplex structures and for adding more flexibility to the current housing strategies closing zone. Just as an aside, Carson Way, I don't know if you're familiar with it, is approximately an R eight zone. It's just in a planned community format rather than fee simple land ownership. In other towns, right now, our company is currently building small lot, single family duplex and townhouse style homes. They're all very well received, look attractive and well done. They're received well by both residents and the towns. I do have concerns with the creation of the new inclusionary zoning requirements that would apply to all residential projects, ten or more homes or units. I'm not opposed to strategies to incorporate a percentage of restricted units in some types of new communities, but it should not be across the full range of all new housing proposals. I'd like to speak to the inclusionary zoning text amendment from a developer's perspective. The text amendment appears to allow both for sale homes with for rent product. For sing, and I know you might not be able to distinguish legally, but it's something, there may be ways to figure this out. For single family product for sale, the cost of construction of a home alone far exceeds the allowable sale prices. Those costs combined with an IZ requirement as proposed will stop most, if not all, new projects from ever happening. Builder can't make it work. If small lot homes were selling for five hundred thousand market rate, the restricted ones would need a two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand dollar price reduction to meet the eighty percent and sixty percent AMI requirements. Now I did a calculation and there's some examples in this and I'm not gonna go through. But I calculated it to be currently at six and a half percent interest, we would have to sell those homes for two hundred and eighteen thousand for the eighty percent AMI and a hundred and fifty-five thousand for the sixty percent AMI. And there's a sheet that kind of shows you, it's just not viable to do it. And I'd like you to go through it. The average net profit for the top twenty-five percent builders in the country is in the five percent to six percent range for market rate units. That would be thirty thousand dollars profit on five hundred thousand dollar homes. A builder would need to commit all possible profit on sixty to a hundred and ten percent of the R eight zone lots to subsidize the restricted units. So they lose money in the process, it just wouldn't work. And those aren't my figures. Well, we're building production duplexes at sixteen hundred square feet, so I know exactly what the cost. And I actually reduced the lot cost in my calculations, so. For rental apartment product, the rent subsidies are significant compared to market rents in Simsbury. For rental apartments in Simsbury, here's what the monthly loss in revenue looks like with the proposed inclusionary zoning. At eighty percent of AMI, rent reduction is four hundred to eight hundred dollars per month depending on the size of the unit. At sixty percent, rent reduction is nine hundred to fourteen hundred dollars per month. And part of that is because the cost of utilities and other things and taxes that have to be. With borrowing rates where they are today for apartment developers, it's very difficult to make a project feasible even with no affordable component. Rents are thirty percent up over four years, but developers' expenses have taken a huge hit to cost of construction cost of construction and cost of financing have gone up substantially. If and when towns consider inclusionary zoning, the requirements need to be paired with density bonuses, tax abatements, or other assistance from the town or the state. I don't see anything like that in the draft text amendment. Without some form of assistance, the number and type of new applications will likely be a significant disappointment and not achieve the desired outcome of additional housing in town, affordable housing in town. Without incentives, it's putting the entire financial burden on the developer. It just doesn't pencil out, so prospective buyers of land will either walk away, significantly downgrade the size and quality of the units, use HUD financing programs where we need to build a hundred percent of the units as affordable, or use eight thirty G where at least then we don't have to listen to zoning regulations and we could essentially write our own design guidelines. So I don't think any of these options would meet the town's broader objectives for developing quality, well-designed, affordable housing mixed in with market rate housing. I also encourage the commission to review the abundance of inclusionary zoning studies that show very limited success and unintended negative consequences. To increase workforce housing in town, I believe there are better ways. Ideally, a program wants to give the town and commissioners more input into where it's located and more input in the quality, density and design. What I believe would work better is a policy to include incentives, the developer, if the developer works with the town on the application. It could even be for specific sites or specific zones. Sometimes that's done through a R and P or things like that if a piece of land is appropriate for that type of development. Density is one incentive, um but it has to be pretty significant and sometimes that doesn't work. Another incentive to consider that I strongly am in favor of is a defined reduction in property tax on just the affordable units. It's a little absurd that affordable units are taxed basically at the same rate as market rate units. So I went into some more detail on some of this, but I'm not gonna read it all. A third idea would be to tie any ten percent retic- restriction to the Build to Connecticut requirements. It's almost lo- somewhat less onerous as to reporting and administration, qualifies for the town's um eight thirty G ten percent goals, incorporates C H F A low interest loans to the developer, it's easier to achieve. A fourth suggestion, State of Connecticut has recently created a new authority to address this very issue of more affordable housing. The Municipal Redevelopment Authority, M R D A, comes online in coming weeks and months. M R D A will assist member towns in promulgating regs that promote housing development. They'll be looking for towns to identify sites and create overlay zones. M R D A will have seventy million bonding to assist on project by project basis. You know, M R D A will be putting money aside to assist towns in the planning and zoning process. I hope this commission may pause long enough to see what M R I D A can bring to the table. There may be some really good suggestions in there. Today, I was on a webinar with Tim Hollister, local land use attorney and affordable housing advocate. He recently wrote a five-part series on affordable housing in Connecticut. Maybe some of you have read them in the Connecticut Mirror over the past couple of months. Those articles have some great ideas for towns to consider. As an update on our iron horse community, we've started construction, the first foundation is going in this week. That's a hundred and seventy-five unit rental community. When we came through the approval process, we said, look, we are advocates of affordable housing, but really believe it should be a cooperative effort between the town, the state and the builder developer. So, um. For that hundred and seventy-five unit rental community, we've said we'd like to see uh us, the town and the state participate in sharing the cost to achieve some restricted affordable units. We're stepping up and State of Connecticut has a new problem, program to assist called Build for Connecticut. Uh, the Build for Connecticut program makes partial, very low interest loans on just the restricted units. If a project will commit twenty percent uh to workforce um units at eighty percent of A M I. So, our objective, and it looks like we're gonna be able to do this, is we're gonna include uh twenty percent at the eighty percent A M I. Um, just as an aside, talking to the people at um C H F A who run the program, if you had a ten percent inclusionary zoning at eighty percent of A M I and I wanted to use um Build for Connecticut financing program, I could do that if I put in another ten percent as well, so we actually had twenty percent at eighty percent of A M I because we'd have to bring that extra ten percent and get to twenty. But then, they would essentially subsidize the financing cost so that um it makes it much more palatable for us to be able to incorporate uh those subsidies into the rents. So. We've started meeting with town officials to see how we could structure town participation through tax abatements on restricted units. I believe with property tax reduction policy or abatement and the Build for Connect- Build for Connecticut new state program, developers like me can be enticed to include restricted affordable units wherever we're gonna be able to build rental housing. It could be more of a cooperative approach and far more successful than a zoning battle or an eight thirty G approach. I believe these two enticements will lead to far more affordable units actually being built. Uh, I I did, I shortened this verbal testimony to not go too long, but had more details in the written version that I handed to George. Um, we have several significant studies um available for you if you're interested, as well as just my quick little cheat sheet um on financial examples of what a small lot. I I'm invol- interested in a specific piece, it's owned by a gentleman in town. And if it were R eight, it would make a wonderful community, but if there's this fifteen percent, it's not gonna happen, what I'd probably do is try to buy it and come in with an application for nine million dollar homes because that wouldn't have those restrictions and I could make far more on that. And that's the kind of stuff, it would be counterproductive to what you're really trying to do. So, I'm available for questions if anyone has the advice.
Could you just repeat what the um M R D A stood, who I stood for?
Municipal redevelopment authority.
Thank you. I got it, municipal.
Sorry, sprained my ankle a couple of weeks ago.
While having a toddler.
Um, my name is Peter Harrison and I live at twenty-one Crestwood. Just bought my home actually in July, first time homeowner, I was a renter in town for about two years before that at uh the ridge at Talca Mountain. Um, and I'm also the Connecticut director of the Regional Plan Association, which is a planning advocacy group based down in New York City, we've been involved in Connecticut for about a hundred years. Uh, and I oversee the program uh Desegregate Connecticut, which is advocating advocating for stuff like this. Um, so I have my personal Simsbury add-on and also my professional add-on, as some of you no doubt have seen me say this stuff before. Um, but I just wanna have a couple of comments, a couple of concerns, a couple of questions, which I think might have been clarified. Um, but I just just wanna say, you know, I really appreciate George, you and the staff, all the work that you have all done putting this together, appreciate everybody on um both various commissions uh doing this and what George had said at the top of this, I think is really important to repeat, it's that we recognize both in Simsbury and in Connecticut that our status quo of land use development is is not sustainable, both in the environmental sense of sprawl is taking up natural spaces, cars are creating immense amount of emissions for uh pollution and all kinds of associated healthcare problems with our sprawl planning. The other thing it's not sustainable about is uh from economic development standpoint. Um, we know just empirically across the country and frankly, all of North America that uh, single family zoning is actually the least sustainable economic policy for a community. Um, and we can get into the specifics of why that's the case, but I think the really key thing to take away is that the existing infrastructure our town has now. Water and sewer, the schools, the fu- fire trucks, you name it, that stuff exists, there's a cost to it. Those costs increase over time uh as systems get older, um as, you know, contracts get more expensive for labor or whatever else. So, the current mindset of we can keep things as they are because we're familiar with them, we're comfortable with them, we we've grown up in the town this way or whatever it is, I totally emotionally understand that, but it's just not going to work out uh for the betterment of all of us, it just, it can't work that way. I know folks are really concerned about property taxes going up in Simsbury. I've seen those things on s- Facebook's pages and elsewhere. Um, there is a correlation for that, the more infill development we have, the more mixed use development we have, the more property value that that tax revenue would generate to pay for the services that we want for our community. So just at either economic sense or environmental sense, we do have to think about strategies like this to really rethink the accessibility of our town. So I really appreciate, this is, as George had said, a pretty incremental process, these are not it's designed to radically reshape the community, they definitely won't do that. Um, but it is a really important thing just to accept the premise that we can't maintain the status quo. And then the next question is, how do we figure things out to really address the needs that we have for existing residents, future residents, which I sometimes feel like I'm speaking for future residents as someone who uh moved into town, took a long time to be able to find a place to afford, but was able to live here because of rental property. So we have to acknowledge our folks, certainly not in this room this evening, not on this commission, that do wanna live in Simsbury or that do live in Simsbury that are struggling too. And that's a really good thing, it's a great town, wanna keep those great things about it, but make it more accessible. So I think this is a fundamentally good idea that I I hope you all approve. I think it's gonna do some really good incremental uh changes, but I just wanna stress that we need to do more and think bigger, and it doesn't mean throwing the baby out with the bathwater and blowing it all up, but it does mean thinking more proactively as Chris had said um and other proposals have been made, thinking about where we can do infill density, where we can do things around bus stations, uh where we can do things around hot metal. So that's what I just wanna say, and specific things, um, on the accessory dwelling unit piece, um I appreciated the clarification on a couple of questions of where attached versus detached as a review process. I guess just philosophically, um, and I've been to a bunch of meetings in Simsbury and other places where the special approval process happens for accessory dwelling units. And generally speaking, most of them are approved, maybe because there isn't a clarity of a setback requirement or square footage or something like that, but generally speaking, given the guidelines, most people get approvals for planning and zoning commissions for accessory dwelling units. So I guess the question would be, if we have articulated clearly what those regulations are, which we already do for single family housing, which we approve as a right, what is the concern with the the special public hearing process for that? And I would say the concern is, as it's been brought up, you know, what if there's a six hundred foot detached A D U in the base, in the backyard or something that might affect my property values? I totally understand that concern, I think empirically, there is plenty of evidence that it doesn't. The fact that you can build those things actually improves your property value. Um, the other piece.
You haven't lived here long enough.
Okay. I I to, you had your time? Uh, what I would say to that, actually to your direct comment is, it might surprise you that you don't wanna live in a community with duplexes or townhomes or accessory dwelling units, but people my age, people younger than me, people older than you that wanna live closer to grandchildren, might in fact. And we have so much evidence of people wanting to live in Simsbury, given the home prices and the lack of rental availability, that I think there's a pretty good bet that folks wanna live in this town for all the reasons that you said, that will only be improved by those folks living in town. So, as much as it might not be something you want to live near or in or next to, I can assure you, there are people that will want to do so and that's gonna be taken care of. Um, so my other point about that is if you're concerned about property values, let's figure out what gets assessed in potential comps for housing. We just went through this buying a house, right, it's what's being uh sold in the neighborhood, square footage, um lot makeup, other types of uh amenities in your home. So if you're concerned about your property, your neighbor's property affecting your property values, should they be allowed to switch over from gas to oil? Should they be able to change the color of their house? Should they be able to put a pool in or not? All these things that we allow as a right have an impact on your property values. You might not think of it that way aesthetically, but that is fundamentally true. We're totally fine with it, doesn't affect our property values. So as much as I understand the emotional concern about that, I do not believe that the evidence backs that up. And I believe actually, again, that there's enough base of folks that wanna move to Simsbury that that would be addressed. On the inclusionary zoning, I'm sorry, just the the small lot signing, my question was, is it just duplex as a right? Or like, if someone wants to apply for an R eight, they get approved for that, they have the the right to do a duplex, but anything beyond that, could they build like a fourplex or something in that if they're approved for, if that was unclear?
No, I'm wondering.
Yes.
Uh, it's, uh, so, um, no, uh, uh, permitted uses, residential permitted use would be single family, du- uh, two-family.
Okay.
Stop.
Okay, so I I thought that was the case, it sounded like some people might have.
Anything that, no, triplex, quadplex, n- not permitted.
Okay, yeah, that that was my understanding, I think some, I I might have heard some comments that folks thought that might be the case where you could build six cluster homes or something, that I didn't think that that was the case. Um, so that's that's clarified. Um, I do have, and and I appreciate Chris's comments and I I think, I forgot your name.
Chris.
Oh, Chris. Okay, excuse me. Um, you know, both of them in real estate and development have concerns about inclusionary zoning. I am an affordable housing advocate, but I also share those concerns. I think just the amount of subsidy going into it and interest rates might change, whatever, whatever, but there's some pretty significant costs built into subsidizing affordable housing. I want to have more affordable homes in Simsbury to own or to buy. Uh, and I do think there is a balance to be struck for inclusionary zoning, particularly for larger developments. So totally in principle, I'm fine with this, I do think there needs to be a discussion of some kind of incentive or offset. Um, there is an existing tax abatement program at the state level, hasn't been funded in eleven years, cause it's Connecticut. I couldn't promise you Connecticut, uh Desegregate Connecticut, we're actually advocating in this session to get bonding for that fund, to do funding programs like this for inclusionary zoning. It's really important, um, you can't put it just on the developer to cover that cost. To the town, eating that can be debatable and I appreciate that debate, so I think ultimately, we've gotta figure out some type of tax abatement. Totally understand Simsbury not wanting to do that just on our own, so I think we need to collectively advocate, hopefully with us and others, the Home Builders Association, to have more funding in this program to offset that. You can grease the wheels on that pretty significantly with resources at the state level. It just needs to be funneled into that program and I think you could keep that fifteen percent number uh or that twenty percent number as part of the extension for the larger units, I think that's totally manageable if you can offset some of that subsidy. It's not gonna happen on its own and I do agree that if we don't do it, we pass this, it's gonna be harder to get those types of developments in town. So that's just something to keep in mind, I I understand we're not gonna do that upfront, I can appreciate that, but that is something we're gonna need to advocate for. Um, and then just finally on um the floating zone, I guess that's where I'm still also confused, I understand it's sort of maybe uh, you know, strategic availability, you know, I lived on the north end of the the Hartford campus, I know the south end is is a pretty spicy meatball. Um, so I understand there, you know, not that many places for this kind of scale of development. But I I think it's a really good idea to have that kind of flexibility in place and I agree, taking out the twenty percent and just putting it in with whatever gets passed. Um, but I will go back to saying, I do think there needs to be a larger discussion ultimately of where, you know, around the center, where around the Wheaton Park and Ride, north part of Simsbury, you know, the skating center. You know, they're really only handful of places we can see smaller homes, a little bit more infill density. Uh, and I do wanna see those places have that, I wanna see mixed use places. Right now, if I didn't have a bum ankle, I I could've walked here or rode my bike here. Uh, it's great living that close to the center, I wanna have more opportunities for folks to have that type of walkable uh resources in town, I think that's awesome for the tax base, it's good for traffic. Uh, it's good for kids having a safe place to play and travel. So I think we need to think a little bit bigger in the long run about that larger scale. Not saying Simsbury is gonna be a hundred thousand people in ten or twenty years, uh, but it needs to be a little bit bigger uh and a little bit more inclusive and it can absolutely do that without baby at the bath water. Um, so I just really appreciate the commission considering taking some meaningful steps. Uh, and I really hope that you support this and we can keep working on some of these solutions in the long return.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from fifteen O Cursed Road. Um, and I don't really have anything planned to say tonight, but I'm just gonna say what's come to my head. So I always love it when people move into town and then wanna change where they moved to. There's a town that's just like was spelled out here and explained and that's walkable and it has high density. It's called West Hartford and it has housing available for it. I I don't understand why we're trying to change the town that we love, that we moved here for. I don't understand why we're talking about what people outside of town want in our town. You're a body that represents the electors of the town of Simsbury, the residents of Simsbury, not people that want to live in Simsbury. We take into consideration who wants to live here, when we paint our houses, when we build our houses. Contractors take into consideration what they're gonna build in town based on what people will buy when they build it. So in those senses, we are inviting people to town. People that wanna live in the town the way it is, not the way in some different weird world we're gonna create it into something that it's not. People move here for the river and the natural resources and the open spaces and yes, the one acre lots. There are other areas in town that have smaller lots that are accessible. When you build cluster housing or small density new developments, you're then taking away some of the value of the small properties that already exist in town. Some of those people that have already bought into those homes, you're now reducing their value, cause you're increasing the market availability. Um I wanna talk about accessory dwelling units. I think part of the reason people really want to maintain a hearing process in accessory dwelling units is because when you make them as of right on any property, no matter whether it's a single family residential zone or not, you've effectively created a two-family property. It was that you could only have one for a relative. I think now anybody can move into one. And as a, as somebody that's been in the real estate mortgage business since nineteen ninety seven, in this town, I can tell you, they affect property values. Not only does it make it harder to sell properties around them, particularly if they're very obvious, but it also can be harder to sell that property. There are people that may want the property and that will move into it, but it's a very specialized piece of property. And if that doesn't work for your family, there's a very limited market for resale on those. I've tried to sell them, I've had listings for them that have taken close to a year to sell. So I think the hearing process staying in place and not just turning over the decision to staff is really important. It's not so much that we keep them out, but it does make it such that the person that wants one has to put a little bit more thought and effort into making sure that it's the right fit in the neighborhood and it's not just an easy sale through rubber stamp. Um I wanna talk about affordable housing and requirements for affordable housing. I don't wanna reiterate what Chris Nelson said, he said a lot of what I was gonna say and he said it really well. Um but like Chris, I represented a developer in Canton in an affordable housing complex and as a result of representing the developer there, also sold houses in a different but similar nearby affordable housing development. And oftentimes, those requirements have unintended consequences. So for example, in one of the developments in Canton, there's an income restriction, but the value of the affordable units has risen over time to be in the three fifty range. But the income limits relative the affo- to the affordable price range have made it such that most people that are gonna buy in there are retired but have a huge nest egg, because they can't have very much income, but on the little income they can have, they can't qualify for a mortgage. So you almost have to buy those affordable units for cash. And I'm not really sure the intention of affordable units is to create something that only people with hundreds of thousands of dollars of cash and savings can afford to buy. That sort of defeats the purpose of affordable, doesn't it? But that's something that happens in these developments. Some other things that have happened in very small zones, very small lot zones, is restrictions were put in place for things in the backyard like swing sets, because they're in such close proximity to one another. But once the families started moving in there, they didn't like that. They wanted a swing set or they wanted this and the neighbors didn't wanna say no. So now the whole neighborhood looks like a hot mess and it's really hard to sell. And like Diane said, because there's limited parking, because they were one car garages with teeny tiny driveways, there's three and four cars on the street. They're not supposed to be there, they're technically illegal, but how many times is the town gonna come in and tow people's cars and make residents furious? They've got two and three and four teenagers living in these small homes and the road is full of cars. Unintended consequences. Also in these developments with affordable housing, these are real situations that I'm talking about. People have wanted to move out of their affordable homes, but for one reason or another couldn't sell or didn't wanna sell, so they rented them. They're not supposed to be rental units. They're single family homes, but they're now being rented at full market rental rate, two, three, four thousand dollars a month for real. And now those people are just gonna hold on to their homes with tenants that are paying for their mortgage and then some until their um deed restriction timetable runs out and then they're gonna sell their house for a huge windfall profit at market rate. So there's a lot of things that happen in these neighborhoods when you put those restrictions on that completely obl- obliterate the reasons for creating that kind of housing zone. Never mind the fact that they're not affordable for developers to to build, because they've gotta then charge way more on the market rate properties to offset the cost, the cost of building and subsidizing the affordables. The last thing I wanna talk about is taxation. We keep talking about affordable housing, but for all of those families that are living in normal, moderate cost homes in this town, many of us who have purchased here twenty, twenty-five years ago, the way the taxes are going, they're going through the roof and causing us, people have been paying on our mortgages twenty years, to not be able to afford our homes. Putting in higher density housing, full of families that are going to use our schools, our EMS services, our our roads and and public works are going to drive up the cost of taxes. We're already having this problem with EMS, where we need a second ambulance and we have to subsidize SVAA. We're already having a burden on our schools because of our taxes. When you bring more people in high density, you're gonna drive those costs up and you're gonna drive them up more than the taxes you're gonna take in. So when we start playing with central planning of what kind of housing is gonna go where and making room for much more high density, we're really opening the door to some dangerous situations for the rest of us who already live here. And I don't like the idea of creating zoning where we don't even know where it's gonna go. Like if you wanna make a zone, figure out where you want that zone and and let people in that area know you're gonna change the zone and let them have their say. Don't say we're creating a R eight zone, but we don't know where we're gonna put it. So you can just come in and propose it anywhere, let's figure out where you want that to be and and then talk about proposing the R eight zone and where it's gonna go and does it work there. Thank you.
We've got shirts on.
You can't let them hold, we have better ones.
Oh, okay.
Uh good evening, my name is Jay Dixon, I live at Six Walker Drive. Quaint little sploppy little ranch. It's not so quaint anymore. I I I uh I'm woefully unprepared to speak tonight. Um certainly comparatively to some of the other speakers. However, I have a couple of friends on the board who encouraged me to come to talk, because I have been vocal about uh zoning in Simsbury and what's been going on over the um past decade or so. I'm now into my twentieth year living in town. Um and I'm I'm proud of that and I uh enjoy living in Simsbury, but um I'm gonna go off of what I planned on saying real quick to echo what uh Lori just said. We're talking about um affordability in Simsbury. Um I live in in a lower rent district. I got up my mortgage statement today and year to date, I have spent twenty-six thousand, three hundred some odd dollars uh to Wells Fargo. Only six thousand of that has gone to my principal, nine thousand has gone uh to interest and eleven thousand has gone to the town of Simsbury. So Simsbury is taking more of my money than I am actually giving to my house, that I am actually giving to the bank, shocking. Um so uh I I have, I have mixed feelings about the uh the whole affordability thing. I certainly am anti thirty G and I've been very vocal in town uh uh in smaller circles about that. I don't believe that it was written for small communities like ours. I I don't believe that it um fits the narrative of our town, the space of our town, the population of our town. And and while I am not anti diversity or anti inclusion uh or anti anti affordability, I don't believe that the script works. Please someone tell me what is affordable about Simsbury? You know, I I just proved my point, you know, eleven thousand dollars or seven, eleven thousand dollars towards towards taxes this year. Um uh uh we are not an affordable community. Um and if the interest is to bring in affordability and those that need affordability, the rest of the community needs to follow suit. And and we we kinda don't, you you can't have high density housing in the center of town and ask people to walk down uh uh to Rush Bowl and buy a twelve dollar smoothie. It's just not how it's gonna work. And then walk another quarter mile to Fitzgerald's and buy uh groceries that are twice as expensive as as Big Y. Which I do enjoy shopping at our local grocery store and I'm happy to support local business. But let's face it, we are not an affordable community. We are an affluent um community and that's just the way it is. And to speak to uh what a few people have said here already, um we we came here, we established ourselves here uh and we enjoy it here because of what it is. And I bought a house, not that at twenty some odd years old I was able to build a house, but I bought a house that was existing. Um I didn't take up more space in this town. And getting to my concerns about some of what's going on with the with the zoning proposals is it seems to be, and please no disrespect to anyone in the room, but it seems to be that we are, we are pandering to developers in our community. And or I shouldn't say in our community, developers in general. And uh my humble opinion is that developers have taken an egregious advantage over our community up and down Route Ten over the past decade. They have not done anything to help us, certainly. My taxes haven't gone down with the increase of of uh of the population, with the increase of the uh large megaplex apartment condo units that have gone into this community. Um and so for us to think that adding more people and increasing the density of our community is going to somehow wave a magic wand and and make things better in terms of finances, it just isn't. Our taxes are never going down in Simsbury. I'm okay with that, because I want Simsbury to remain the the humble, small town bedroom community that it was seven years ago. Um unfortunately, we've gone in a direction that I'm not completely thrilled with, um but that is that. I will say however, that the, you know, um I walked through Carson Way in the Powder Forest community. Um it a butts, sort of butts my neighborhood. And if we are going to develop our open spaces, which I am completely against, but I realize that I don't have complete control over everything, um development should be done with care and um with 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 care to the aesthetic of of our community. And as sad as it was to watch the Powder Forest literally get blown up and not by Ensign Bickford anymore, um I I I believe that it was done with some character to our community. They created some nice walking areas for people, they maintained um some invisibility, if you will. There are mature trees, um uh there is community within that neighborhood. Uh I am concerned that uh some of the easing of restrictions and 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 dampening down on on zoning areas will just further allow developers to come in here and increase our population. And and my perspective and the perspective of I think a large vocal majority of the community, well, it's only, you know, twelve or so people here, um is that Simsbury is full. Try driving down Route Ten, pick the hour and try driving down Route Ten. Simsbury is full and are we technically full? No, is full an actual category? No, but we are full.
Peter, I don't wanna be a jerk here, but could you get back to the four topics that we're here to.
I'm Jay.
Jay, excuse.
I'll be Peter if you want.
Peter's over there.
Uh well, the 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 topic, the topic is, is that we are, we are increasing the availability of developers to increase our population on this town. And and I I think I'm right in line with that topic. And and to uh uh to echo, to be a counterpoint to a point that was made about um we are not sustainable in our current, in the current mode that we are in. We are absolutely sustainable, in my humble opinion. Simsbury is not going anywhere, we are all able to maintain our properties that we live in. Um and to to, as a, I will say that I am a local public service, public safety expert, um both my career and my volunteerism in town. Uh adding more people is what adds to the uh increase of our public services in town. When we put more houses in, that's what takes away the fire department's ability to respond, because it increases the call volume and it increases um the 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 drain on the volunteers. The the ambulance is no longer a volunteer ambulance, they are only by name. The town just currently dumped half a million dollars into them over the next five years or three years and it's going to increase. The fire department, if we continue to increase our population, the fire department will have to go career. If you think our three and a half million dollar budget is nominal now, just wait until you have a careered staff. Um the police department is asking for more, more officers, more cruisers. Uh the streets are not wide enough for our current uh uh car volume. Simsbury is full. And I would hope that the perspective of the zoning commission is to not necessarily give rights, more rights to the developers who are quite frankly, only there for profit. I I would be too, if I owned a development company, I would, I would want as much profit as as I could receive. So um probably spoke too long and if I went off topic, I apologize. However, I think it all ties together and I think it's important for us to recognize and focus on the individuals who are in town currently and those who want to come into town or those who would like our town to change, they're a distant second. Um because Simsbury only remains Simsbury if we, if we maintain the current character of who we are right now. So uh I encourage you to take a hard look at how we are opening up avenues for for uh denser development. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Thank you.
Anybody else? Try some quick, hand this. Okay. To the commission. Anybody wanna?
Not a bunch.
Sure. I'm not sure if we wanna talk about, well, I'll see, I guess. My interest is ensuring that we save the discussion in in substantial way till we hear from remainder of the people who wanna speak and will be there in two weeks from now. But I think we should have a little conversation today about what we think, if there's anything we could do in the meantime or whatever you wanna tell us, Tucker, we're here.
Well, I I did have one brief uh comment, um there's a lot of talk about the, who we as a, as a board represent. I will say now, if this is something to go on, um I I know when I was elected, I ran on a very clear pa- platform of increasing the population of Simsbury, of increasing the amount of development in our. The population of Simsberry, of increasing the amount of development in our, our infill development. And I won that election more than a thousand votes to my next competitor. Now, I know that people are, don't always agree with that, but there's a significant amount of people in Simsberry. Who are not always represented at these meetings, who seem to agree with that idea if the elections are anything to go on. Um, I'd also say that uh, it is a good thing that residents of Terriffill didn't hold uh, the same opinion that. Simsberry was full when the actual developments that make up most of the population of Simsberry were being built. We were a farming community with a small industrial area. Um, and if the standard of we have to keep everything the same was met. Simsberry would not be Simsberry, it would be a series of poor farms and a small village in Terriffill. I just think that's good food for thought for the uh, commission.
Thanks.
Can I say something? Um, I just had a quick clarif- quick clarification question for George that it came up a lot tonight. Um, that there's, that there was concern of somebody taking like a residential lot that exists within a. A neighborhood, an R forty neighborhood, an acre lot and tearing down the house and then um. Developing that into like a small lot zone with a bunch of different houses. This would be more for new construction or would that be, is that on the table in what we have proposed?
No.
Just to understand, that's not what my understanding was, but.
So anybody can propose to rezone their property today to any zoning category, right?
But it comes before.
Right, I mean, nobody could have an R, uh, uh, you know, an, an R forty piece of ground today, they could propose to rezonate to R fifteen. Which exists today in your zoning, but it's your job as part of that process to weigh compatibility issues, whether, whether the fit is right. Um, a zone change is not a um, is not an automatic approval, it is a, um, it's both an objective and a subjective process. So, so anytime a zone change comes in front of you, you've got to weigh, it's a public hearing process, you will hear from. From the adjacent property owners, you will hear from the neighbors, um. So that, you know, that, 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 that burden kind of gets shift to you in making that decision on an application, like it does, like it always has.
I just wanted that to be clarified for everybody hearing.
It's no different, it's. It's literally no different, somebody could propose on an existing R forty lot to turn it into an R eight lot, but again, you have to have public order and sewer. And it would be your job to determine whether that made sense. Um, you know, and it made sense from a, from a policy perspective and a, and a standard perspective.
Jackie wanted to say something.
Oh, Shannon wanted to.
Excuse me, oh, I thought that was Jackie's hand up.
Um, just a quick question, George, um, I think Diane mentioned, um.
Shannon, please.
Making some, the, the potential to make zoning changes through charter review or charter revision, is that?
I'm not fami- I'm not familiar with that. But I, I'm not familiar or nor do I know how to answer that question.
Well, the answer is yes, charter revision is going to speak about planning and zoning if people want to attend the charter revision meetings.
Yeah, but I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that charter revision can tweak standards in the zoning regulations per se.
As much as we have, I mean, those are the things.
I, I think that's, that's, that's under state law, you, your job, um, as, as contained in the general statutes. Now, I think charter revision can speak to makeup and, and, and those kinds of things, but um, they can't. Can't say we wouldn't have any.
I'm just staying with.
Uh, we could be like a combined P and Z, like a lot of towns have, that's possible.
So that's, that's, that's different than, 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 than a standard.
Right.
But the opportunity to change is a regular thing, just vote for somebody else. These jobs aren't given to us for life.
I just have two, two points I wanted to make if I could. Um, first of all, um, Chris reminded me of something that I think we had talked about at our last meeting and I don't know if we ever got anything put on the agenda, but. Um, we had talked about it the last um, review of the AD, somebody had come to us for um, an ADU. Um, and the gross floor value uh, was a little vague in our regulations and so we had talked about possibly being able to define that better. In the regulations, so I don't know if we can get that added to an agenda or something like that, Mr.
So, 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 so I would, I, I would, I would have that conversation as part of this amendment that's in front of you.
Okay.
And we can walk through what the, what, uh, what the regulations say, where the conflict is.
Hmm.
And then have you decide on how you wanna measure.
Okay, yeah, cause it, cause we don't really specify and so.
Because. Well, we do, there, there is a, like, there is, there are two separate definitions of, um, it's gross, it's gross floor area. And, and gross building area, two different categories we have in our, in our zoning regulations. I think we need to, I think you need to decide as part of this, what the most appropriate one to use is.
Yeah, okay. Um, and the other thing I will just say is just, you know, having hea- heard from folks, I, I do. I do see that we're kind of a little more, we're being a bit passive with the strategies, which, which is fine, but. I like the idea of trying to be a little bit more um, proactive about actually. And I don't know if that's necessarily this body that does that, you know, but maybe we can at least encourage and, and. Add our voice to getting the selectmen to be a little bit more active, but where would we like to develop? And, and, and like Chris was saying, I mean, I, I think there's something to be said for us trying to. Again, working across all the boards with developers, with, you know, with realtors, you know, and just see a little bit more. Active in our approach, so we're not waiting for people to come to us, but maybe we can sort of, sort of propose. And again, maybe not just our board, but I see a real value in that and I would, I would like to encourage that and I think, you know, in any way that we can, I think that's. Something to consider.
Transfer into development districts or something like that, maybe even one backed up with some state funding would be a great idea.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, as mentioned, there is state opportunity, you know, there's, there's opportunities and, you know. Just having a little more control over things might not be a bad idea.
Sure.
Yep, just to talk.
Thank you. Um, so I have two points, I'm, I'm saying that out loud so I remember that I have two points. Um, I think first, I, I, that's kind of where I was going with what, with the comment that Diane just made. Is, and I'm just throwing this out there, um. As a body, is it possible for us to make recommendations to say the charter revision or to the, I know it is for selectmen, but. I really like what, what you're saying and I feel like. The more we hear from the public, the more vocal we need to be to these other bodies, um. So, there's that, and then, um, Chris Burnett, you mentioned the um, Canton Housing Trust Fund.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, do we have information on, on that? I, I'd like to learn more about that.
Some communities will have, uh, in lieu of a tax write-off, will have a, a, a developer pay into a trust fund. That would be used, set aside by a community to build public assets and such like.
We had, I believe we already discussed that.
We have discussed it.
Yes.
I guess, I thought we might have really met our eyes.
I feel like we just don't have an avenue for it as of right now.
So, so, so my, 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 my recollection during those conversations was that because.
I think you're right, yeah.
Cause we didn't have an established housing trust fund, it would be difficult to have a developer, uh, pay a fee in lieu of, we wouldn't exactly know where to put it.
Hmm. Right.
Um, I know that the Housing Advisory, uh, the Board of Selectmen's Housing Advisory Board. Has been talking about those options as part of their recommendations. I'm certainly happy to bring back any information on, on, um, on the way Canton does business, I'd be happy to provide you with that information.
Your um, comment kind of feeds into what I was gonna ask about and that is about these avenues for incentives and tax abatements, George. Cause I know like this has come up um, a lot from different developers, from the public. Um, I know we've been talking about it on Economic Development Commission, so. What kind of pa- path is there for that type of discussion and to like, look at the numbers and look at what that means? And look at how that pans out and how do the different boards, like obviously that's not us that selects that, but how do we work with the other boards to kind of? Look at what that.
Yeah, so I would, I would, um, yeah, I, I think there are a number of conversations going on in the community, um, related to this. Let's see, you're talking about land use, there's others talking about, um, you know, tax abatement policies and, and incentive, and incentivization. Yeah, um, you know, I, I would suggest utilizing or communicating through the Housing Advisory Committee, which has. Members of the Board of Selectmen and members of your Planning Commission and members of the Zoning Commission, so. So there is a direct opportunity to, you know, share across the table and communicate, that, that's how I would do it.
I mean, Richard, I just have one more thing. Then I'm done, um, so I, again, I think we're all in agreement, but you know, I, I take what Jay says, you know, the whole Simsberry is full is not a. Totally, I mean, I, I hear what he's saying, I mean, we, we have a lot of people already. I, I guess what my thought is, is rather than just sitting back and let, letting things happen, we should be, we should control, try to control the conversation a little bit more so that. You know, we recognize that some development is gonna happen, but let's try to do it the way we want it to be, rather than just sitting back and saying, you know, seeing what happens. That's, that's my approach, you know, because.
Well, you have a, you have a plan of conservation and development, which is a policy document created by the Planning Commission through public process. That does lay out where we, you know, expect to have development, we know by and large it's in the, the hot metal corridor, um. And we know that there are just a handful of, you know, called larger footprinted properties, you know, for lack of a better way to say it. Um, you know, I would say for most of these strategies though, they, they really are more, um, more appli- applicable to, to, you know, to an infill approach. Or a, you know, redevelopment approach, um. Workforce housing overlay district obviously is, is bigger would and would be designed to be used for a larger development. It wouldn't be applicable to Hartford South, for instance, they've got their own, I mean, that's got its own zoning category that allows essentially. All of that kind of mixed use approach, but uh.
You could, just wanted to clarify one thing, so George, with respect to ADUs of, as of right. Could you speak to what uh, opportunities neighbors would have to weigh in in the absence of a public hearing?
So none, there would be no opportunity to weigh in, it would be just like, uh, 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 y- you building a house on a piece of property. Neighbors do not get to weigh in on your house. Be no difference in, in how we, in how we adjudicate that from a regulatory standpoint.
Thanks, thanks for making that clear.
I, I do have some comments on that, um, I, so my inclination is I, I see the point. And what we've talked about as a board when it comes to that is that somebody comes in and all their neighbors are sitting there saying, no, you can't do that. And it's really easy for the neighborhood to gang up on somebody who's trying to make an improvement. Or trying to do something that they need to do that really most likely is going to get approved regardless of the neighbors coming because. You know, we need to be fair in how we deliberate on that type of issue, right? So I think that's a valid point, I will say, I thought that Lori made um, an interesting point about the process of them coming forward. Making the person more considerate of how they're going about doing it. Um, that was a, I thought that was an interesting, I thought that was an interesting perspective. So that's left me more torn than I previously was in terms of, I, you know, not wanting neighborhoods bullying people or treating people. Differently based on where they're living in town, um, I think that's a big important thing.
Yeah, I, I, I would rather see more stricter, stricter rules about where accessory dwell, dwell units could be built. Rather than public hearings.
Yeah.
I, 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 I think it would be better to not have public hearings, but have stricter rules. Like if, if something's not gonna be passed be- because of a public hearing, then it for sure probably shouldn't have passed because of a rule that's in place. I feel like that is a more fair way of doing it, it's less prone to, um. Subconscious discrimination, like that anyway, you know, just having solid rules and just sticking with that.
Can you just expand on, on that a little bit, Josh, like what, what, can you give me an example?
So.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
The, the example that I, I, so this is a bad example to use for a zoning commission. But the, the example I've always heard is when you give, for example, police officers. The ability to decide, you know. You give them discretion on whether or not to charge someone with a, a, a crime as opposed to having, you know, so drunk driving, there is a strict point oh eight. It's not, oh, if the cop feels like you're drunk, if they, you know, because that leads to cops that have racial biases. Or biases against, you know, gender, whatever, going, ah, you're drunk, you're not, even though they both, you know, blow point oh seven. So I, I want, I generally want just solid rules rather than a subjective thing like a public hearing.
Which we kind of have, because the rules are pretty.
Right, right, the, the rules are pretty solid.
Yeah, the rules are the rules.
If we kind of have, but we need to define how we get to.
I agree with that.
If the rules are strict enough, then we need to write solid rules, not rely on public hearings to shoot things down.
Yeah.
Well, the thing about public hearings is it's just that, it's intended as a public hearing. The public doesn't vote in those meetings.
That's true.
The people who vote are sitting here and they have their own conscience and their own values to guide them. And frankly, I don't know that they need the public very much, but it's a valuable source of information too. We've had a number of public hearings over the years that had to do with ADUs where numbers of the public were able to very clearly. Are raise concerns that weren't new, but uh, maybe hadn't been fully considered. It's not the public who votes no on those occasional nos, it's the people sitting here. And I think that Josh makes a good point about having standards and if we can have standards that are, you know, understandable. And that people might feel more comfortable with, uh, that would be a good thing, but I'm not afraid of. You know, giving that up as, as somehow the citizens of Simsberry are gonna be disadvantaged, that ADUs are gonna be popping up everywhere. I don't think that's the case.
No, I don't.
But um, evidence has, support that and uh, what, what, we didn't make enough. Uh, share enough information probably as we started this in that. These suggestions and these strategies are, you know, we could say we're not gonna do some of this, but it's happening in other towns and in other states. And in California, I saw a story that I've shared with some, they're, they're allowing condominiumizing uh, ADUs. So people are building ADUs and then they're selling, they tend to be to family members and friends, but they sell the ADU or it works the other way around. And create a condo agreement and all that stuff, that's, that's down the road, but it's in Delaware, it's in the East Coast too, it's not just in California. But there's a lot of things happening in order to take advantage of the opportunities that exist to get residential units. At lower market prices, but where seniors want to age at home. But they don't need the big home they've lived in all the years, but they don't wanna move away from their friends and neighbors and the shopping centers they're used to and that kind of thing. An ADU that they can live in comfortably, you might ask yourself, six hundred square feet is the right number, but thirty percent of a large house is, is bigger than six hundred square feet. The point is really just that it's an economic opportunity for seniors to stay where they are. If they have financial issues, they can do just that and could do it today. But it's increasing invisibility around the country and around Connecticut too, so. Um, we're not making this up, but these seem like strategies that were worthy for our consideration and that's what we're doing, we're giving it consideration. And uh, we're doing more of it in two weeks, but um, we haven't turned over every stone for every piece of information, every, every example among. But we'll have to make some decisions at, at some point and our own experience, and I've been doing this a long time. I, I really don't remember um, a situation where somebody's ADU wasn't approved.
Right.
And it was, you know, uh, a disapproval that I didn't agree with, so I don't know if there, somebody else who had been here a long time might have a different sense of it, but. I think the processes were pretty well.
Yeah.
And the ones that were denied.
And we hear from the neighbors who, like you said, don't want it, it's up to us to make the decision, but sometimes there are neighbors that are in favor of it, that speak out for them.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
So, again, we are our, the elected people that many people have stated, you know, that's, this is our call to make.
Well, I, I agree, I think that we are. We are all, we're, we're a legislative body, we, we create regulation and we also enforce the regulation, right, we're, we're, we, we do both, both those things. If an ADU is out of regs right now, if someone came to us, I, I don't care how many of the neighbors like it, it's out of regs, I'm gonna vote no. And if it's in regs, no amount of. And if it's in regs, no amount of talking about the the character of the neighborhood, which we're legally barred from considering, um is gonna make me vote uh no on that. If it's within the regs, it's their property. I I mean, we talk about like big government, small government, um telling people what they can and can't do on their property is is the heavy hand of big government um to uh pushing down on people. Um it's a local government, but it doesn't make it any more oppressive uh in certain circumstances. Um and we're not we're not a giant homeowners association. We're a we're a town. And I think that's people have the right to do what they need to do within reasons. And I think those reasons, what what within reason means is where we have those discussions. When we have those legislatively.
What their house as a single family, Tucker.
Sure.
Okay.
And now it's more valuable because they can make it a duplex.
That's really.
Not not really though. Just to clarify.
Yeah. We're gonna disagree on that.
It's not.
Sure.
A A D U is not a duplex because the percentage and size difference is not the same as a duplex.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. But now they can receive, now they can charge rent on on a on a additional housing unit. That's a great option for a lot of people.
But to our our earlier points either, also about allowing people to stay in town, in the town where they grew up and where they lived and where they work and they want to stay. This is another way for them to do that.
Right, it's another way for the workforce to have places to live.
Yeah.
So if you're an EMS person, I don't wanna pick on anybody in particular, but you know, teachers, all sorts of folks would benefit from access to affordable living quarters that wouldn't be for life, but might be great for a couple of years, maybe longer. It's a a one bedroom deal and it's close to the school or it's close to soccer. There's a lot of opportunities out there and that's it's really the reason why A D U's are emerging around the country.
Yeah. Well, not just not ju- not just the teachers even. I mean, teachers are relatively well paid, but the paraprofessionals,
Oh, right.
all of the other staff that is not as well paid i- i- is critical to the running of the school and can't live in town. Absolutely.
Thank you for expanding my examples, but I think it illustrates the concern.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's just another tactic for meeting a need around affordable housing. So, did anybody wanna add anything?
Well, I had um just a comment on the inclusionary zoning. I have some real concerns. I've had them all along and I uh I can see this is only making it worse.
Yeah.
Um so I don't, I feel like we're gonna need to look at that one.
We've got a lot of feedback.
And just get more, I need more information and I'm gonna look through some of the um charts and whatnot um provided by um Chris, but uh that's 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 concerning. I I think I've I've it's we're hearing over and over again that the numbers aren't aren't adding up and um you know, we kind of put it forward again. We dropped it a little bit, but it seems like the numbers are still not adding up. And uh I would hate for Chris to be able to build something like Hazel Meadow and instead he builds nine million dollar or twelve, you know, one point two million dollar houses instead. Like that's not, I don't think what we're looking for. So I think we need to revisit that.
I'm I'm becoming increasingly of the opinion that whatever we do with inclusionary zoning, we're gonna upset sixty percent of the people. If we do if we do nothing, we open ourselves up to eight thirty G.
Well, yeah.
If we if we do it this way, we wind up making it financially impossible for developers. If we uh provide incentives, we raise taxes.
But if we don't get the if we if we get more million dollar houses, then we're getting so far we're getting farther from eight thirty G and even with this fifteen percent, we're still
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm not.
like skewing our numbers against eight thirty G 'cause you're only getting fifteen out of a hundred.
I'm not I'm not arguing this is good. I'm just, I don't think there is a good answer here. I think I think we've got only bad answers.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we gotta figure out what the least bad answer is.
And I wanna see see more about the tax abatement situation because there may be a way to do that where, you know, if we look at the big picture, I would like to see what that how that looks over a number of years and if it actually, I don't know. You have to think of it like an investment in getting the type kinds of developments that we would want. But um I, yeah, I don't know enough about that. I'm not a tax abatement expert at all. It's just something, right?
Neither we. But we are gonna be voting on it at some point. You're not too down for a job.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, we're gonna have to become experts real fast.
Give me a vote that you don't wanna deal with.
I could just follow up uh uh Mr. Chairman. I fully agree with Kate. I think it's and it's always been my position all along on inclusionary zoning that it's unreasonable to lay the burden entirely on developers. It needs to be buy-in from the state and more importantly from the town. And uh you know, that's and if we don't get that level of commitment from the state and town, it's not gonna work. And I think there's no point, I think, in implementing regulations that we know are not gonna be successful.
Yeah.
Mm, you're correct.
I think I think.
Well, if we're convinced they're not gonna be successful, why would we open them up?
Right, that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the discussion being had. On that point, I'm not trying to make it about all of the points.
We need four votes. We need something.
Yeah.
Right.
I I think I think the I think these are important points to lay out.
We just have the discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and long anything else?
Long sharp it.
Good stuffs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. But I'm it's but I'm excited for the next public hearing too, to just see what like other feedback we get to stipulate.
Points made tonight and, you know, we're gonna get more more points.
Right.
We'll see.
So at that point, should we make a motion to extend the public hearing?
Yeah.
Uh.
No, we it's already uh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's a right. Oh, it is.
Yeah.
It already done.
I would I would go ahead and make a motion since we're here and you've I've had some of your own discussion.
Sorry.
Okay.
I would I would make a motion just to continue the public hearing to the date specific on the sixteenth, even though it's been advertised. It's probably proper process to do it that way.
I think.
That way it's in the record that you you moved it today.
Mr. Chairman, uh Chairman.
I'm just wondering.
No, I was saying, I was just pointing.
Oh, yes. Um I would like to also suggest that we add an additional public hearing after the new year for this to increase the opportunity for the public to participate.
Well, if you wanna make a motion to that.
I will make that motion.
Okay.
To uh I I make a motion to hold an additional public hearing on our toolkit, housing strategy toolkit after uh the new year at our first meeting.
We cannot go to your first meeting. I don't have enough time to have this.
Yeah, we could also make that determination. We could make that go to the next meeting.
That's fine.
I think that's I think that's something that you've referenced.
Like what if we're the same people?
That's fine.
Yeah.
No, no, he needs the time though. So can we do it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, let me just so so just move it and and we'll schedule another public hearing. How about that?
For.
I just.
I scheduled that third public hearing.
Yeah, but.
We don't need to you I can't decide. You can't decide on the date yet. I've gotta look at the calendar.
That's fine. That's fine.
But it's conceivable we'll decide after the already scheduled public hearing.
Yeah, it's our two public hearings.
That uh that's two and that will give us enough insight to make some determination on these four items. Maybe we don't go forward with.
I I. It's just hard because we're right around the holidays, you know, and so.
Yeah, that happens every year.
Yeah, but just.
I'm worried about what's coming on the docket.
Yeah.
Like like the reason that we did them now is because we don't know what's gonna be on the schedule in January and February. Not to say that we can't put another one out there, but there could be stuff that comes in and then we have to actually do that work and it's hard to fit that stuff in with public hearing and it just goes, you know, until you're here till midnight. Um when we had a kind of a lower schedule right now, right in in December.
Mm.
That's somewhat cyclical too.
Was last night.
The other thing, okay, is it's the reason why, you know, there's a new P O C D every ten years or in the most recent case, every five years. But when you look at what the aspirations were and what people, different commissions and board were expected to be working on, then you look back and you don't see a lot of it accomplished.
Mm-hmm.
The reason is there is stuff that comes along
Yes.
that because of staffing levels, because of experience levels on the boards, there's all sorts of reasons for it. And our capacity moving issues forward is nowhere near what we think it is when it set out the aspirations. We've thought it does, but the same kinds of things happen in every cycle.
Mm-hmm. I do think a- as we've seen, oh, you know, just in the last year, momentum builds with each maybe momentum's not the right word. Participation increases with
Yeah.
with each um opportunity for to for the public to participate. And um I I think we need, I would like to see us extend that for to an additional meeting.
So you'll make a motion.
I I kinda made a motion.
Well, you didn't get a second. And what's it?
No.
Just so you know, I it's I'm looking at the calendar. It's it's likely we could get to to Jan sixth would be that date. That you're saying. And then the second meeting in that month is Wednesday, the twenty second. So just but I I think there's enough time to advertise for it.
Whatever, yeah, I mean, whatever you think is.
Yeah. I would.
Should we do the twenty second?
With with.
I think you should. I think you guys need to make a motion to get a second.
That's what I'm.
Uh for a quick question on that, would that mean our decision point on this would be on the twenty third or on the twenty second of January?
It's not my call.
Yeah. We don't have to decide on it.
Right.
No, we don't have the decision.
You're so because it's a it's a commission generated application, there is no timeline.
Right.
So I would actually suggest that we do move it, that we host, oh my gosh, have it on the twenty second of January
Well.
just so we're moving away from the holiday.
That's a Wednesday after a long week, but I mean, I.
The sixth or the twenty second?
The twenty second. It's just because that's just how everything works. So I mean, but it's I there's only so much I feel like you can do to account for everybody.
Yeah. So whatever, what do you think is best?
And there's three chances. I think.
So I would recommend you make a make a motion to schedule a third public hearing on whatever date you want.
Um, okay, so.
Either the either the sixth, the twenty second.
Okay, so then I am making a motion to schedule a public hearing on January twenty second to, what do I have to say? To continue discussion on our housing strategy toolkit.
To continue this public hearing.
So let me make just make more, just let me just jam up the words just a little bit more. Um one, you don't need to make that decision today. Um two, I actually don't need, I I don't think I will need to advertise unless you want me to re-advertise. You could you could technically, I think on on your meeting on the sixteenth, just continue the public hearing like you've done in a number of other occasions where you um but if you wanted it specifically advertised for a new day, then you would need to take action.
Uh we can just continue the public hearing, right?
Yeah, and so you.
And that's that's what we've done on the.
Yeah.
You could frankly, you can do that on the sixteenth.
Yeah, I think that's a better.
But then you'll but then you'll be back to then we'll know exactly what day and time certain.
Okay.
I'll have those options for you.
Then do I have to withdraw that now motion now if we can just?
No, there was no second.
You never got a second, so you're good.
And yes, you will.
You're good.
You're killing me.
Okay, let's just move on.
So that's we need to make a motion to continue the public hearing to December sixteen.
That's true.
Second.
No, we don't. That's really good job.
That's really good.
We don't.
Yeah, we've said that.
We're just.
I think you should. I'm saying I think they should make that.
Sorry, could you just make it?
Yeah, just make a motion.
And I seconded it. Okay, done.
I.
Okay. All in favor, say aye please. And those opposed, nay.
Call the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Whatever.
Ooh, it's after nine verses.
So we're having a the second public hearing on this matter on the sixteenth of December and there'll be another house.
Yes.
Sixteenth of the sixteenth.
The sixteenth of December, everybody. Sixteenth.
Yeah.
No. Anything else?
Sixteenth.
I don't have any other items.
Wait, there's no development update?
So I.
If if so, I'm gonna move to skip it if that's reasonable, okay?
I'm not prepared to provide that.
Then then we've completed all the items on the agenda for tonight. Um I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. And a second. Um motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously.